Welcome back to the Space Coast Daily Studios here at the corner of US-1 and 520 in beautiful Cocoa, Florida. And that primary is not far away from us now, August 20th coming up. And we're going to give you some valuable information today about voting. Your right to vote is very important and we need to get everybody out to vote in the primary and the general election this year. And today with us in the Space Coast Daily Studios, we're honored to have a friend of Brevard County for many years, Dan Diesel, who has decided to run for District One of the Brevard County Commission. Dan Diesel, welcome to Space Coast Daily.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Charles.
Well, it's a great pleasure to have you here and we're going to get to know Dan a bit more today. Talk about his family and his great experience helping people and helping Titusville area for many years. And now jumping into helping Brevard County countywide. We're going to talk about his experience and his motivations for moving forward in just a minute. But before we do that, we wanted to give you some important information so you could be ready for the upcoming primary. Of course, the District One is the towns of Cocoa, Scottsmore, Mims, Titusville, Port St. John, Cannibal Groves, and Sharps. That's the area that Dan is looking to represent. The primary course is August 20th and all registered voters may vote in the primary. However, the registration books for registering as a voter close on July 22nd. So that's just about a month away from now. And the last day to request a mail-in ballot is August 8th at 5 o'clock. Early voting is August 10th through August 17th. And of course, the polls open for the primary August 20th from 7:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m. So this particular seat in Brevard County, Rita Pritchett, has been a longtime servant there in the north end of the county and she is terming out of her service. I want to thank Rita for her long service in Brevard County. And Dan has been, basically lived all his life in Titusville. Graduating Titusville High School, dedicated his career to educating kids up in Titusville area. Was the Teacher of the Year, Brevard County, 1994. Was the Florida Athletic Director of the Year in 2007. Was inducted into the Space Coast Sports Hall of Fame in 2016. And has a real passion for Brevard County. Dan, I hope I didn't miss anything there.
Well, you actually added one. That was really nice. But I was the Titusville High School Teacher of the Year in 1994. I don't want anybody saying, "Oh, Brevard County." I was proud to be the Titusville High School and I was teaching biology at the time because most people would never imagine that part.
Sure. So you've been an educator at Titusville, a real big-time coach up there. Met a lot of kids and done a lot for kids up there. And now you went into politics up at the mayor position up there in Titusville. Tell us about why you got into that and what you've learned from that.
Well, first of all, I don't like the word politician. It's part of the game. I get that. But I like to call a difference maker. And that's why I got into it because I was making a difference in kids' lives. And the Christmas parade of 2015, I was a facility AP. So I was overseeing the facility at Titusville High School where we launched a parade. And bottom line was Walt Johnson was there and said, "Hey, what are you going to do when you retire?" I said, "I don't know. I'm scared to death. I'm not going to be able to make that difference in kids' lives and people's lives." He said, "Why don't you run for city council?" And I had never thought about that. And so this was, I was never that guy that, "Gosh, I gotta be the mayor. I gotta be..." No. He put that in my mind because I wanted to continue to make a difference. And so I thought about it, talked to my wife, and she said, "Well, go for it." So we did and I ran for the seat that Walt was vacating, which meant it was only a two-year term because I didn't know how I was going to like it. I didn't want to be there if I wasn't going to make a difference. And sure enough, I ran for it. I won in 16. And after the two-year term expired, I said, "I'm making a difference. Let's run again." And I was unopposed and went on to be the Vice Mayor. And then after being the Vice Mayor, I ran and was the Mayor.
What surprised you being in that role as a councilman and then the Mayor?
The first thing that surprised me, even when I was running in 16, was how many people think because you're running, you're an expert on everything. I'd go to a forum and people would ask me about the chemical content of the Indian River Lagoon or this. And I said, and I say this even now from the diocese of the Mayor, "I'm not the expert, but..." And then of course, you find the answers. That was a surprise, but otherwise, not a lot of surprise. Because I can tell you that having been a head football coach and having been an athletic director, it's an awful lot like being on the council. You have various people coming from various angles and you do your very best to give them all a good answer. And you try to make people happy and come up with win-wins, but you can't always do that. So really, my best training for this kind of had me prepared for the fact that, you know, it's not always a win-win.
It's nice to hear someone in government who admits they don't know everything and they rely on people who do. So kudos to you for that. All those folks working on the Indian River Lagoon, we do appreciate the experts and we got a lot of them here.
Absolutely.
We're going to talk about that in just a moment. But let's talk about this race. It's a very interesting race. It's very crowded for District One. Four Republicans and two Democrats, I think, are currently registered. You've got Robert Jordan, Republican, is a former colleague of yours on the Titusville City Council. You've got Katie Delaney, a former Mums for Liberty member. Dwight Segler, Republican as well, an activist who's been previously ran for the seat. You've got Brian Bobbitt, a Democrat, who was former Executive Director of the Keep Brevard Beautiful. And Nathan Susher, a Libertarian, former city council candidate. So it's a crowded race. What do you think?
It's a crowded race. I know all of them. You know, we've certainly chatted. I just came from an event with Katie. And I'm good that way. So bottom line is I feel really happy with the base that I have. As you said, I've pretty much grown up in Titusville. From Coquena Elementary to Imperial Estates Elementary to Jackson Middle School to Titusville High School. And then I'm back at Titusville High School for 35 years. While I was at Titusville High School, 54% of our population was from Port St. John because they didn't have a school. And so then when I retired, my son went to Port St. John Space Coast as the head coach. I went with him there and coached at Space Coast High for two years and was even the campus monitor. And now low and behold, he went to Cocoa High and I've been with him going on five years. So I really feel like relationships in my base for 35 years. Matter of fact, when I went to Space Coast to a registration, I knew more of the parents than I knew the kids because those parents were students of mine or players of mine back in the day. Went to Port St. John Little League last night. My granddaughter plays for Port St. John Little League and they're in the All-Stars. And I saw at least five or six former football players who have their daughters on that same team. So that just means I'm getting old and my granddaughters are on teams that my players, kids are on.
Everyone comes from mom and dad, right? There's no one to replace them. Tell us about your mom and dad.
Oh, I was just so very blessed to have a mom and dad who always put their kids first. I remember more than once where they're trying to come up with the 35 cent for lunch money. And if they had to sacrifice their lunch or whatever, they're throwing their quarters and nickels and dimes on the table for us. And they were always there for us. My mom was, I always have this story, but there was a time in junior high when I was a little bit nervous like we all are. And I said to my mom, I just had this image, you know, remember the old tin Band-Aid boxes?
Yeah.
I said, "Mom, I wish I could just put you in a Band-Aid box and take you with me to school." Because that's how important she was to me. My dad, he was always there, coached every Little League team that I was on, followed me in football. He was that kind of parent back in the day when they let you do that. Wherever the ball was, he's following it up and down the fence. That's the way he was. And he went to every one of my wrestling tournaments, actually drove us to most of them. I hope that I'm half the parent that they were to me. And any parenting skills that I have, I certainly got from my parents.
Yeah. This is dad here, standing in the back with you as a young boy. Tell us about this picture.
That was, I was probably in the majors at that point. That was the Braves and Indian River City Little League. And we were pretty good. We weren't great. But I played second base and, you know, he was the manager. And I can't tell you how important it is to anybody who thinks about that. Those relationships that you can have with your kids by helping on the Little League teams. Because that's such a big part of my memories with my dad.
Sure. And here's mom, wonderful lady with your family dog. Tell us about this picture.
That was her companion certainly through her last years. She called it, that's my Missy Dog. The dog's name was Missy. And it was a very lazy dog and we had to keep mom from feeding her too much because she just got bigger and bigger. But the bottom line was, we all love our pets. We love our dogs. Probably got that from my parents too. But, you know, that was my mom's companion and just pleased that she had her. But that's, my mom was just showing love. Would never be without something to show love to.
Yeah. Tell us about mom. Tell us some more details of her.
Well, she was a kid who, back in the day, very rare, came from a single-parent family. And lived in St. Louis, came down here from St. Louis. And basically, they had nothing. She was that girl that they used to have to go get coal outside and bring it in. They used to go outside to use the restroom, meaning that she came from tough times. And she always wanted to make sure her kids had it better than her. So I think that was the main crux for her. She did everything she could to make sure that we had a better life than her because she came from a tough one.
And she also worked in the school system here, didn't she?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. She, when she got here, she worked at Apollo Elementary first. And then she retired. I take that back. She worked at Jackson Middle School first and she retired from Apollo Elementary School. And I can tell you now that I still get people to say, "Oh, I remember your mom at Apollo. She was so good to me." She always brought peanut butter and jelly and bread because in those days, they didn't necessarily have free and reduced lunch. But if there was no lunch for somebody, she would make sure they had lunch.
Well, you talk about making an impact on Brevard County football, Dan. You've had a career really doing that. And you started out yourself, of course, at Titusville High School. And this is an image of you coming off this field. What fond memories and real strong relationships do you have that you remember from your days at Titusville High School, looking at this image?
Well, I surely like this image because it does bring back all those memories. And in this day, Coach O'Brien, Coach Pugh, Coach Harris, Coach Armstrong, those guys are a big impact in my life, probably part of the reason I wanted to go make an impact in kids' lives. This particular picture is kind of funny because I'm coming off the field. And basically what's happened is the top part of my helmet in those days was kind of an oil-filled pad. And the pad had busted and the oil had come all out and basically was just a shell. So I come off the field and Coach Harris said, "You know, come here, Tiger. I got you." And that's how we talked. And everybody who knows him will say, "Whoa, that's Coach Harris." But anyway, so he takes a handkerchief and he puts it in the top, puts it back on my head, get back in there. And that's how we used to do things back in those days. So it was a funny story. Just every time I look at that picture, obviously I think about, boy, that people don't know it. But there's a helmet that's broken in there and I'm going back in the game with a handkerchief to protect me. But that being said, it's also a picture that brings me great fond memories of Titusville High School and everything that happened there.
Let's talk about District One. Incredible engine of Brevard County and incredible driving force. Really worldwide, being the launchpad for the world. Is there exciting times in Titusville, aren't they?
Very exciting times. I mean, I've never, I've been here since 1965. My dad came down here with the Gemini program. And went on to the Apollo program and the Shuttle program. And every one of my relatives has worked for the space program except me because I've been at Titusville High School. But I have never seen, none of us have ever seen where this truly has become a rocket launch port. Meaning that, you know, we've got one later today. We had one two days ago. We've had two in a day. Exciting times and quite honestly, and I'm always excited when I hear the word NASA. But I can also tell you, I'm also excited when I hear the word private sector. Because the word private sector has that place rocking.
There it is. Quite a history. His family goes way back into the space program. Of course, Dan moved into teaching. What are some of the fondest memories that you have? Maybe some golden moments, if you will, over your long career in teaching?
Well, obviously I was, well, you know, if I had to first say, the first thing that comes to mind is making a difference in any kid's life. There's an awful lot of times, even in biology, where someone would talk to me and say, "Hey, Coach, I've got this problem. I've got this. I've got that." So the one-on-ones, you know, will make a difference in a kid's life that way. I think another golden moment for me is every single time as the head football coach or even as the athletic director, when I got to sit down at a table like this and a kid was signing a scholarship. That was a life changer. And you want to make a difference in a kid's life, help them get a scholarship to the next level. And for us, we didn't have a bunch of kids that were going to Florida State, Florida, Miami. When I was the head coach, we did in 82 and 83. We had some kids go to Michigan. We were winning state championships in Ohio State. But we had kids going to places like Cumberland College, Catawba, Mars Hill. It didn't matter. They had a chance to go on. And anytime I sat down at that table as a coach and looked over their shoulder as they signed that scholarship, basically was saying, "I'm signing to improve my life at the next level."
That's an interesting way of looking at it. Here we have a picture of you as a young player in college. Tell us about this one.
This is one of me running off the field.
Tennessee Tech, I think.
Tennessee Tech, yeah. I'm running off the field. That's my last game. And the cool thing about that picture is my dad took that picture from the stands. And so I'm coming off the field. It's near the end of the game. And again, I'm just coming off the field. My dad took the picture and probably, oh, four or five months later, he passed away. So that's, you know, it was an important picture before, but it became a real important picture after. So very exciting. And also I will say that it brings back memories of my time in Cookeville, Tennessee, in Tennessee Tech. Very similar to Titusville. People are great. People care about you. When they walk by and say, "Hey, how you doing?", they mean it. And if you don't give them an answer, they're going to stop and wait for one.
So you got an undergrad degree in what?
Secondary education. Certified in physical education, health, and biology. And biology is probably what got me the job because there weren't a whole lot of people running around looking for me in PE.
Yeah. So you went on to teach biology at the high school?
I taught biology. Well, first I did get part PE. I think I had like, in those days, we had seven periods. I taught six. And so I think I had two PEs and four biology as well. That lasted one semester. And by the second semester, I was all biology. And for 13 years, I taught biology. And like you noted already, in 1994, I was Teacher of the Year. And it always cracked me up. I would tell people that, you know, you kind of like to try to break that stereotype. And back in the day, we had Miracle City Mall. You walk down the mall, nobody ever looked at me and said, "Hey, look at that great biology teacher." So it was kind of nice to be able to say, "My peers voted me." That's maybe why it's one of my highest honors is my peers voted me the Teacher of the Year. And it was also nice because it's very few times I've ever heard that the head football coach also won the Teacher of the Year at the same time. And I was the head football coach at the time.
We're looking at an image here of you getting your award as Teacher of the Year. Who's this nice lady with you in this picture?
Actually, I think that is the Florida Athletic Director of the Year. We're at the school board. And they did a presentation there. And that was 2007. That was a real honor to win a state-level award, Florida Athletic Director of the Year. And that's my wife Barbara, who, like I said, is with me in everything that I do, including those sort of things. And nobody's more proud of me than her.
And here's a nice picture of you with a proud graduate of Titusville High School. Tell us about this nice one.
That's Emmy Estes, who was the class president of 2018. And the reason that's so important to me is because as a class president and the class in general, that was my last year at Titusville High School. That was the end of my 35th year and I was retiring. And they adopted me even as their junior year, knowing I was going out. They adopted me and took me under their wing and kind of got to go out with them. And so I was real special and Emmy Estes had a lot to do with that, but very honored.
And here's a great image of you coaching and leading some kids at Titusville High School. Tell us about some of these student athletes and what have they gone on to do?
Well, that was my offensive line. I was the offensive line coach at that time. And that's at Dre Field, which is also a great memory. But we were at Dre Field and every time they come off the field, excuse me, every time they came off the field, they'd sit down and then we'd talk about what's going on. And, you know, I had Calora, I had Moy, I had Clark. I had a great offensive line. And I believe that was in 1984 when Mike Dickey was the head coach. Al Wernick had just taken off and gone to, I believe, Gainesville-Buaholtz. So, you know, I got promoted up and here I am in my second year at the high school level, coaching a team that was a defending state champion. So just an honor. Again, I love the position coaching because you're closer to your kids that way.
Folks, we're with Dan Diesel. He's a Republican candidate for District One, running for the seat that Rita Pritchett is vacating. Rita served a long time, eight years on the commission. She's termed out. And now Dan is looking to take over for District One and we're learning more about him and his experience. Obviously now, let's move out away from football, Dan. Let's talk about the business of the city of Titusville and District One. The growth factor is amazing in Brevard County. I've lived here since 1981. And nothing seemed to change for sort of 20, 20 years or so and 25 years. And in the last 10 years, everything is changing. So where do you see Titusville? How's it progressing? And what are some things that concern you and you like to help manage should you be elected on District One?
Well, I think we all like to use the term smart growth and I like that term a lot. Because it's one thing to grow, but you've got to grow smart. And part of the growing smart is you've got to have the proper infrastructure, which means sewer lines, highways, all the water, all the things that go with growing. And we are growing. But I definitely would say that I hear more and more, especially in District One, as I do the campaigning and getting out even more, and certainly I hear it as a mayor. I think most of our residents are ready to slow down a little bit. Of course, the problem with slowing down a little bit is we have a housing need. And so while we have a housing shortage and we need some affordable housing, it's difficult to do that if we're not building it. So when I started off by saying I'd like to have a win-win, I think there are some win-wins out there. That we can have some affordable housing, we can have some smart growth, we can have proper infrastructure. But we have to sit down and it has to be thought out. You can't just say, "We're going to put this here, this here, this here, and this here." We've got to figure out how it all works before you do that. And that certainly would count when we get to the county level as well.
You've been a very successful coach. And how do you, how do you plan to take those skills into helping to manage and get the most out of the county staff should you be elected?
Well, I would say the one thing that I have said at a couple forums, you're going to have a lot of candidates, including myself, saying, "I want to do this. I want to do this. We need infrastructure." You know, "We need smart growth." What you really need to do any of that is three votes. And I really think that team building is a factor. It's very difficult when you're on a sunshine law situation where you can't sit there and talk to your people except where you're at. But we need to have the same common goals and that's to better our city, to better our county, and to better our state overall. So I think that's the key. How are you going to make anything happen? You know, you have to definitely get three votes. You have to work together. I say this all the time, too many times in our, even in our world. We got this fist, we got this fist, and we're doing this and we're doing this. And sometimes in city council, it can be like that. Sometimes in the county commission, it can be like that. But at some point, if we're going to move forward and we're going to get things done, you got to kind of do this. Sometimes you got to do that.
Your style of leadership and on that county commission. Obviously, we've seen lots of commissions over the years and everyone has their own style. What will be yours to get the most out of your term on the county commission should you be chosen?
Kind of, I think I just kind of showed it. I mean, there's no question. You have to be willing to do this. It's just like if you're wrestling or if you're in a fight or if you're on a football game, you have to do this. But sometimes you have to get together with your team to do that. So I think my style is going to be, you know, let's get people together. I'm a guy who, one of the things that I'm going to do as a new commissioner is I'm going to be out. I was just out yesterday talking to people. I was out today at some events that involve our constituents. I'm going to be out. I've always told my coaches, when I was the athletic director, the most important thing you can be isn't necessarily be nice, isn't necessarily be smart. The most important thing you can be is be there, be present, be where you need to be to make the biggest difference in the folks' lives. They need to hear you and you need to hear them. That's my, my style. I want to communicate.
The Indian River Lagoon, 160 miles, goes through four counties, incredible, beautiful piece of water. The more I look at it, the more pleasure I get from it. Do you think it's improving with these hundreds of millions of dollars we're spending in trying to restore the lagoon?
For me, like I said earlier, I won't call myself an expert there. But my experts say, the Save Our Lagoon people gave a presentation recently in our chambers. And they said it's getting better. They said the seagrass is growing back. But the bottom line is, we need to do more. We have to do more. We can't just say, "Oh, it's getting better." And just, "Okay, it's getting better." It's very important to me that people know that the city of Titusville, when the Save Our Lagoon came out with their, what's been done with the tax dollars, et cetera. Number one on that list who has the most completed projects is the city of Titusville with 16. The next behind us isn't even another city. It's the Brevard Zoo. And then the next behind us and behind us and behind us, and I believe at Cocoa, and I don't want to overstate that because I get it wrong, but Cocoa or Cocoa Beach, they're behind us. We're 16. Then comes the zoo, I think at 11. And then you've got six and four and five. We are way out in front in Titusville. We're doing our very best in the city of Titusville. And that wasn't our stat. That came from the Save Our Lagoon folks. And that's not just little projects. We have a $9 million water treatment plant that was put up near the hospital along the Indian River Lagoon. We have $250,000, basically they're like filters that everything that comes out, they're called baffle boxes, that filter the water that runs off the land onto the river. That's a big problem. But the biggest problem has been septic tanks. And the septic tanks, we've removed, are removing the septic tanks along the river in the city of Titusville. Well, what's the problem with that? Well, if, I said this analogy when they were talking to us. If I clean the fishbowl over here and we got a big fish tank and I'm cleaning it here and I'm doing really good here, but they're not cleaning the fish tank over here, we still have a dirty fish tank. So quite honestly, we've got some septic tank issues that need to be dealt with, not only in Titusville. And we still need to deal with them there, but down the road in Port St. John and to our north in Mims, septic tanks on the river are a problem.
Yep. They certainly are. And, you know, being on the water a lot, we spend a lot of time out there. We do notice an improvement in the clarity of the water. And a lot of people are telling us that too, engagement on Space Coast Daily. So we'll get there. Brevard County will get there, right?
And I'm hearing the same and I'm seeing the same and I'm going out there. But I can't say that, "Oh, I see. It looks clear." So I try to get the stats and the facts from, you know, people like Laura Lee Thompson and the people who are on the committees. And they're saying to me that, "Hey, we're getting some seagrass over here." And there are people that will then say, "Well, nothing's getting better." I'm just going to continue to do the best we can do and I hope Titusville continues to lead. And I'll add one more thing to that. And this may come up in a different question, but I want to make sure we get this in. The city of Titusville is also the only city that has a tree ordinance and a low-impact development ordinance. Both are very important to our environment on land. But as we know with the tree ordinance, it's very good at helping a river too. So we're the only city that has a tree ordinance. We're the only city that has a low-impact development ordinance. And certainly, we're the only city that has both.
We've got some images of you with your lovely wife here and also your boys. You obviously got a very tight-knit group. You know, you were obviously a councilman, city of Titusville. You moved up, more responsibility to mayor. And this is a big step, isn't it, taking in a countywide role? How difficult of a decision was that for you? And how do you think that's going to affect your life as a family unit?
My wife is a rock. My wife is my rock. My kids are there to support me. My family's there. My friends are there. That's important. It's going to obviously be a big impact, but when I became the head football coach, that was a big impact. Then when I became the head, was the head football coach and became the athletic director, that was a big impact. And then when I was at Titusville High School still for two years and became a city council person. Everything has a big impact and you can't not do something because it's going to have a big impact. You need to do something because that's what you're supposed to do. And I really feel like that I've been led. And I'll tell you, one of the reasons I was so slow in deciding was I wanted to make sure, and I'll just say it like I feel it, that the good Lord was really telling me to go there. And then through conversations with my pastor and then a sermon he gave that I still have on my phone, that basically said, "If God opens a door for you and you don't go through, you messed up." And if he opens a door for me, whether it's the perfect thing for me or not, if that's what's good for the Lord, that's where I'm going. And that's, that's one reason it was like, it took me a little time to get there.
Yep. Faith and family. And here's an image of you actually in a church. Tell us about your faith a little bit, if you don't mind, and what it means to you in helping you govern.
Well, thank you. I guess I kind of brought that up and sometimes when you bring that up, you get different reactions. But for me, I'm going to be me and part of me is my belief in Jesus Christ. And I have been a lifelong member of the Methodist Church and IRC now. Indian River Church has left the Methodist Church for various reasons I won't worry about right now. But I will say that it's a tremendous church. I've been there since 1967. And I really can't do anything without the good Lord guiding me. I mean, I just really, really can't. Call me not strong enough, call me whatever. But I can tell you that during the COVID, and I'd gotten COVID pretty bad and kept kind of all nervous and this and that. It just kind of popped in my head from Psalms, "Be still and know that I am God." Be still and know that I am God. So I got to do a little talking about that later. You can put a whole lot of things in there, but the main thing is, you know, be calm. Don't be anxious. Do what you're supposed to do and end all that because I am God. You got to put in God's hands and that's how important it is to me. I mean, I just, that's where I'm at.
This is a very interesting race. It's flooded with people looking to make a difference. One of your opponents, Robert Jordan, has raised, according to the financial records, $194,000. Does that bother you?
No. No. And I've discussed that with everybody who asks. This race isn't going to be one with money. This race is going to be one with relationships. And I will put myself out front with relationships. Again, 35 years at Titusville High School. That's not to count the 25 years I did as the Jackson Summer Rec Coordinator. So in the summers, I was dealing with the youth, the elementary kids. And in the regular year, I'm dealing with the high school kids and their parents and it goes on and on. Titusville Little League, Country Acres, Foster Home. I feel like I never, ever did anything because, gosh, I hope they'll vote for me. I never planned on running for anything. That has nothing to do with anything. I just, I feel like I've been me. And when I'm me, I'm going to treat you right and I'm going to do my very best to make you better from having been with me. So I don't think that, you know, sure, am I going to tell you that, you know, there's a lot more stuff he can do than I can do? So I, I don't think that, you know, sure, am I going to tell you that, you know, there's a lot more stuff he can do than I can do? I do. There's no question. I mean, you know, we're, we're not anywhere near there and we never will get anywhere near there. But I'm going to say again, I think that we certainly can win with what we have. There's been more than one football team that was said to be outmanned and the next thing you know, they, they win the game.
Yeah, I've lived here since 81. Truman Scarborough was a county commissioner, soft spoken man. I never heard him say a bad word about anybody and he never advertised. He never saw, he never saw much about it. And he was a county commissioner for a long time.
You know, he, he was a special guy. I was very fortunate to know him. And I was on the board of directors at Tyresville Little League, which was at Sandpoint Park. That park, the, the baseball field's no longer there. But when you walk Sandpoint Park and every time I walk Sandpoint Park, I remember this is the concession stand. This is right field. This is left field. So, so fun. But I remember that we were struggling because we were kind of falling apart down there. We weren't exactly the, the high money league. And the bottom line was we got in touch with Truman Scarborough and he came down to our league. And because we were city owned, county maintained. Well, the city would say, well, their county is supposed to maintain you. And the county would say, well, that's a capital improvement. That's not something we maintain you. City needs to do that. Well, between all that bickering, nothing was getting done and we were, you know, our buildings were falling apart and we were about to get condemned. Truman Scarborough, you know, I just talked about the most important thing you can do is be there. Truman Scarborough was there. And I, I find that the most important thing you can do. Be there and do something to make something better.
Dan Diesel, running for District One, looking to get your vote in the primary, August 20th for the Republican nominee. The county commission seat pays $61,000, I think, per year as a salary. Will you be a full-time commissioner?
Oh, absolutely. My wife, I used to drive my wife crazy. I still do. Because every Sunday and I'll go up to, you know, I think I'm making 11,000 now as, as the mayor. It's like a, a high school supplement. But I go up there very often, but no matter what, I'll go up there on Saturday and/or Sunday because I can get so much more done when there's not people saying, you know, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. And I love the folks up there. But I, I love to do that. And even as an athletic director, it was part of my routine to be up at school, Saturday and/or Sunday. Because again, you can get so much more done before you sit down and the phone starts ringing. In this case, I, I mean, if there's an office, you're supposed to be doing something, right? So the point I'm making is, and truthfully, I don't even have an office as a mayor. We got kind of a little back cubby hole that everybody can use and they're stored. So no, I don't even have an office and I go in there and, and do what I'm supposed to do. I always used to tell my sons when I'd stay after football practice and work on athletic director stuff and I was there right home. Dad, when we going home? When we going home? I said, you know what? I don't work to the clock. I work till I'm done. And, you know, I'm not going to sit up there and do nothing just to be there. But there's something to be done. I would call myself full-time. I can't imagine not. With or without that salary. I mean, I will say that city manager and many others have said, you know, you're the most active mayor, the most visible mayor we've ever seen. I'm, I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying some people have said that. I feel pretty visible. I feel like I'm out a lot. I actually was briefly the interim principal at St. Mark's Episcopal Church here in Cocoa Village. They're having some struggles and it was my job to come in and try to keep them open.
I remember that.
And we did keep them open. But while I was there for three months, I realized I can't do a job like this and do the mayor the way I've been doing it. Because the way I do mayor is be there and you can't be there and there and there and there. You've got to be mayor. Call it full-time for 11,000, but it doesn't matter what the salary is. If you're going to do it, be there and get it done.
Yeah. Obviously, should you be chosen by the voters in District One, you'll have to surround yourself with good people to help make things happen. And my experience has seen that the most effective commissioners have a really good staff around them. Tell us about your plans for that, should you be elected. You must have thought about it.
Well, I will say, you always think about it, but I'll be honest with you. I, I also feel like that if you're playing the next game, when you're supposed to be playing this game, the thing we've got going right now is we've got an election going on. And people have asked me, you know, are you going to move the office? Are you going to have, who's going to be your staff or whatever? None of that matters if you're not there.
There it is. There's the coach.
None of it matters. If you're thinking, if you're thinking about the next game during this game, you're thinking about the wrong thing. So as far as staff goes, I will tell you the most important people. My wife will be there for me. My kids will be there for me. My grandkids will be there for me. But as far as the staff, that's, that's not on my mind right now.
How many grandkids do we have?
Five.
Five?
Five grandkids. Yes, I do.
All right. They'll grow up quick, won't they?
They have grown up quick. I think I told you, but last night, I think it's a minute ago. But I was at Space Coast, excuse me, I was at Port St. John Little League Field. I'll be there again tonight. My granddaughter's playing All-Stars for Port St. John Little League softball. And they won the first game against Merritt Island. They lost the second game. So tonight we've got the championship district game, Port St. John versus Merritt Island. And I love that stuff. I love it.
Yep, that's it. Well, folks, this has been Dan Diesel, a Republican candidate for District One. And you folks up there in, in the north end of the county, you're going to be the ones who make that decision, August 20th, who will represent the Republican. All voters are able to vote in this election, but it's the people of Cocoa, Scotts, Moore, Mims, Tyresville, Port St. John and Cannaveral Grove and Sharps that will be most affected by this. Dan, as we close, what message do you have for the people out there as to why they should click Dan Diesel on that ballot?
Well, the first message I have for the people in North Brevard is you are special. You deserve to be special. You deserve to be represented. And you deserve to understand and the people who I work with are going to understand that this county doesn't end at 528. And this county doesn't end where I'm at right now at 520. This county doesn't end until you get to the Volusia County line. And too many times in my time here, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be recreational facilities, which will be on my list, whether it be proper fulfilling of employment opportunities, I feel like sometimes the north area has been neglected. I can tell you as a high school athletic director, I felt like there were too many times that too many great things were going south and we were still playing. And I love Dre Field, but we're still playing at a field that we got to get in a bus to go to. The portables were falling apart. The field was not adequate. We had to cancel a girls' soccer tournament because our field wasn't ready to take it. That's embarrassing. And that is what we have dealt with. And then I remember taking a football team down to Palm Bay to play in their castle of a stadium. And I said to them, this is what they get in the south and this is what they think of you up north. I'm not going to overly make a big deal about that, but I can tell you right now that our, in our schools, there are two schools that have turf fields. They're about four miles apart, Palm Bay and Melbourne. And I love you guys in Palm Bay and Melbourne. But I'm telling you, we don't have that up in Tyresville. We have wonderful facilities and I appreciate Truman Scarborough and, and our director up there, Jeff Davis, does a great job. This isn't about somebody not doing a great job. But when we have a softball tournament, if it rains, we're not playing anymore because the field doesn't hold water up there at Cana Lakes. But boy, you go down to Vieira. Oof. Point I'm making is, folks, I want you to know I will represent you. We'll get the three votes we got to get. It's going to be fair. And I want you to know that I appreciate that you are the grassroots people, not only of our county, but of our central Florida area and of our state. You are grassroots. I am grassroots. I am no elite businessman. I am no elite wealthy person. Cater. Rest assured, I'm not living high on the hog and then nobody calls me elite wealthy. But when they do call me and what I call you, we are grassroots. We are North Brevard and we are growing, thriving and striving and we will be represented. Thank you guys all y'all.
There it is, folks. Dan Diesel, there's a Diesel coming down the tracks. You better be ready. He's ready for Brevard County. Dan, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you. Thank you for watching. Appreciate it. Let's get it done.
We appreciate your willingness to serve. For Dan Diesel, I'm Giles Malone for Space Coast Daily.